Everybody, welcome to Agenda Review. We'll be going through the agenda for B O C C and the Fire District for the meetings on Wednesday, April the 10th. So Manager Stoltz, want to walk us through?
Good morning, everyone. Tanya, you gonna do?
I do. Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So for county announcements next Wednesday, we will have two Stress Awareness Month, which will be presented by Calm Care and then the Burn Ban Reminder. It is presented in that month. So it is, I'm sure, all year round. However, we will be focusing it on that. We should, yes.
Okay, we have one proclamation to start the meeting, and then we have a series. We'll check on that. All right, just test make sure you're all paying attention. We have a series of appointments then, and most of them are Chris Labrum's, but let me just quickly cover. We have a Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board by Commissioner Lopez, which is, I'm not sure where we're at on that board, but we're getting closer to filling that. A Kichai Township Board Appointment as Item C, then D, E, and F are Wastewater System Installation and Maintenance and Sanitary Services Board Positions, all in Chris's shop, and M, A, B, C, D. And then G is also a a plumbing board, a group of five being reappointed to the Plumbing Board also under Mr. Labrum. So lots of M, A, B, C, D appointments. Under New Business Fairly Brief, the District Attorney's Office will be in under Item H, talk about the HEITA grant, and give us detail on that. That's Deputy District Attorney Aaron Breitbach will be in to discuss that. We get HEITA money every year, and Aaron will give us the, the plans on how to spend that. Item I, you've all been briefed on many times. It's the R H I D Discussion and Policy. So that policy will come back and hopefully for ratification to move us forward on how to manage those. And then Board of Bits and Contracts is Item J. K and L are Professional Engineering Services for certain road projects, and Lynn is here if there's any question on either of those. M and N, I understand you've been briefed on. They are large sums of money. These are both Corrections Grants. I think Steve came in to visit with all of you. Rusty's here, and Steve's not here, but Rusty's here if there's any questions.
He's online.
Oh, very good. Steve's online if there's questions there.
Are we able to bring up the fact that grants are they're level funding, they don't go up? Do we need to go back to state and say, hey, everything goes up, and you're not giving us additional money for the, to support these programs?
Rusty, well, I mean, that's a general policy question about a lot of grants, not just these corrections. We use these as an example, but go ahead.
Steve sits on a board of Corrections Professionals who interact with the Secretary of Department of Corrections. They lobby routinely for increases to funding. Steve's on, he can speak for himself, but right now there's work in the legislature, and I don't know if the money would go to these comprehensive grants or these comprehensive plan grants or otherwise, but right now there's a potential for a $5 million increase to community corrections budgets for the coming fiscal year if it gets through the final phases of budget. But Steve and his peers routinely lobby for more money. Steve, are you on there?
Yes, thank you. The Kansas Community Corrections Association lobbied for an additional $5 million from the Secretary of Corrections to enhance our adult budgets. The governor only put in 2.5. House Representatives bumped that to 5 million. The Senate took it out, back to 2.5, and we've heard that the, it's been reconciled to 5 million extra, so we would get that portion if it passes. And that would be added to these, to the adult portion, not to the juvenile portion.
We'd like to see increases annually that.
I would like to see annual increases, because when I was talking to Steve, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, why the way that we're being able to use this money is we have to cut other things we were doing in the past to do the most important thing. So it's a balancing act, and we're actually reducing services because of the flat budget. Did I misstate that, Steve? I want to make sure I said it right.
No, that's correct, that our behavioral health work for folks with substance abuse and mental health issues is very hard and challenging, and the money, we ask for more money than we know we're going to be awarded, but we want to show what our, what our true need is.
I, I do think it's important, as we're having a broader conversation around our funding and what, what that looks like and how much property taxes we're bringing in. I think anytime that something like this comes up on our agenda where the state mandates we run these services, yet their funding has not kept up with the amount it takes to run those services, that we point that out. If we can start showing taxpayers, like when we say that our reliance on property tax have gone up so much, and a big piece of that is because of the state, anytime we can show them with examples, I think is really helpful. So I would love to just, while, if we pull these to have that discussion further, I think that needs to be part of it, just another, like, this is another example of what we say our reliance on property taxes is, is more because of things like this. And if this was the only thing, that'd be one thing, but it's so many that it adds up.
Lindsay, you're online. We have created documents in the past, because we're having the basic discussion here of where the state is wanting us to provide a service and doesn't fund it enough, and then we have to shore that up with Commissioner, what you just talked about with local tax dollars, basically. Lindsay, we have a spreadsheet currently where we track what we have to subsidize in a state program, do we not?
Yes, we have all, for all 16 mandated services, we have a spreadsheet that shows dating back to the Great Recession, what we have spent, what state aid has come in to offset that, and then the level of county support that has been required to subsidize. So I'm happy to resend that around.
That would be helpful, and I think a spreadsheet is great, but I also think when we're discussing these things publicly, it's really good to point them out, just so we can say, here's another example. And then the more we do that, I think the more people are going to realize when we're saying we're so reliant on property taxes, because this is one of the main reasons, well, we can say we've been having this discussion every time it comes up, and just have those points kind of laid out. Thank you.
We need to leave this on consent or in, in the regular agenda so that we can address this, so the public can hear why that we're putting more of our property tax money into things that are mandated by the state.
I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, we can, we could easily fill that, and I was going to ask if, going forward, I know we can do that. Let me make sure I'm square on this one. So Item N, that number could change if state passes budget on the adult side. Juvenile, Item M, that's the number we got for.
Steve, would you clarify whether?
Yes, the, the extra funding. As far as the Extra funding is only for, I'm sorry.
Go, Steve.
The extra funding is only for adult programs, juvenile programs, as, as what's in front of you, and then a evidence-based grant that's on a two-year cycle that subsidizes juvenile. So juvenile is in a better, way better place than adult.
So what I wanted to clarify was whether juvenile is in the same position as adult.
So Steve, we're, we're going to move these over to new business. I think the question, under, even under juvenile, and you can, I have to answer it now, but just be ready for next Wednesday, is what they're giving you in the juvenile side of the equation enough to where you can continue to run the current programs that you have? Or do, will we need to subsidize? I think that's the question of Commissioners. So when, when you present this, and I think we might just present M, and, and we'll recalibrate the agenda here, but you can, I think we'll present them at the same time as one item. That way Steve can just get to the podium, and Commissioners can get their questions answered. I think that'd be the question for you, Steve, is, does that cover what you need to have covered? Okay, we're good. Thank you, Steve. Item O is an amendment to our 457 Plan, and I've talked with Sheena about this. This is Secure 2.0 Act is federal legislation, and there's one facet within that legislation that allows and recommends that those with 457 plans, if you are a domestic violence victim, you can get into your 457 plan and pull money from it without penalty. That is what this amendment is. So according to, and Sheena's not here, she's had a training today, but this is being done all across the country at HR departments. So that's the request on Item O. And then Item P is the removal of hold status on five Calm Care staffing. Tim is here to talk about that. This is another good news thing. We're hiring enough now to where I think we're wanting to reduce some of the holds on these, and if, if any questions on those positions, I think Tim could hit those. Item Q is routine business, and then we do also have a fire agenda. We've had a resignation from the Steering Council, Item A, and then new, Item B, I think Doug has talked to you, he's going to apply for a safer grant, and he will be here to present that as new business next Wednesday on Fire Agenda.
Do we know Andrew Hall that's resigned? Do we know what appointment he was for?
He was the appointment for the aircraft. The larger aircraft manufacturers. But once that, once that resignation is approved, we will start the process with those two, the recommendation.
That is the agenda for next Wednesday.
Yeah, Managerin, Chair, based on yesterday's discussion and, and the withdrawal of your, of the motion, can we add, I'd like to add that we reconsideration of whatever, on new business, consideration of instruction staff to work with the city on potential merge services for whatever that 60 or 90 days is, however we want to order it, then we can have the discussion then above. Okay. So just, let me put it first, if that, get it out of the way, I don't care. Do we want that on the agenda, or do we want a staff meeting? Because I still do not know what the fiscal impact is. I don't, there's so many questions that I don't have that ought to be answered. If you want to put it on the agenda and do it in front of everybody, it's fine, but I think it ought to be staffed.
I think that's, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I think that that's what we're asking them to do going forward to see what that fiscal note is, because how do we make any decisions if we don't have that base
Right.
knowledge? And so that's, from my understanding, if we vote on this next week, it's just like, take those next steps to see what that fiscal note is, and not necessarily.
Why do we need to vote to ask the staff to take a look at the fiscal note? We need, all the time we ask the staff to do things and bring it back to us so that we can vote on it. Right now, I don't know what we're voting on.
Well, if, based on comments yesterday, some of us feel like we don't want staff to engage in that, actually you, and, and I know we and I feel that staff should engage with the city staff.
I don't have a problem with staff taking a look at it. Why are we voting?
I think because it was in the on-bunk, because the city has decided to go that way, just to show that we're all kind of here together to see what, what it looks like. Not saying that we're going to do anything with that information, and maybe it doesn't work out that way, but I at least take that next step to see what it could look like.
Well, the community does want us to lower property tax. That, that's an absolute. So what are we doing? We're taking a look at a small budget from us and a small budget from them. How much total savings are we going to have from those two small budgets that's going to impact the property tax of the average citizen? And, and I would say it would be pennies per year, but you don't know that for sure either. You tell me, are we going to save 25 million? I don't know. No, because that's Are we going to save pennies, all due respect? You're saying pennies, but and I'm not saying I'm, I'm saying on the property tax bill, the bill that they get.
Okay.
Well, what are we going to save? We're going to spend a lot of staff time right when we're going into budget to come up with something that maybe we're going to save a small amount of money that, once it gets to the, to the property tax bu, bill of that member of Sedgway County, it's going to be pennies on their property tax bill, pennies. So we're going to spend a lot of time and effort, and we're going to say, yay, we saved the taxpayers' money, and when they get the property tax bill, they're going to say, what did you do?
Well, I, and I don't think I have ever exercised, what I've heard before, is that if one Commissioner wants something on the agenda, it's on the agenda. And so
Put it on the agenda, and I'll say the same thing.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I, I just think, I'm honoring the previous motion that happened, and, and the Chairman graciously withdrew the motion. I think it, it's just, it's clearly yesterday, it's a new day where looking at merged services is part of our world, in my opinion. And that's where I just, I think staff needs to be involved to.
Well, there were a lot of things that came up at the end of the meeting that would have more of an impact on the total tax bill of the public than what this would ever have.
Okay.
Well, and that's a really good point, because I think we agreed at the end of the meeting that when we do our Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Pro-Tim monthly meetings, we're going to have both managers come in and, and figure out what that looks like to all of, all of those things that we talked about at the end. Like, how, how do we continue this conversation beyond this? But this is just, I think, we started this two years ago, and it's just something that kind of gets the ball rolling, and, and if it comes down to, there is no, there's no savings, there's no customer service quality improvements, I mean, all of those things, then it doesn't mean we have to do anything with it, but I think it at least starts that ball rolling on, on this, and then the bigger things come with that as well as we continue. Just a good first step.
Thank you, Chairman. So just a couple of quick, quick questions. How was this started two years ago? Did we vote on this at some point in the past?
I wasn't here.
Manager?
When we on-bunked it, I don't know, I can't remember. I'd have to go back and look, but I don't think we voted on it.
We've given an assignment to P P M C.
Yes.
And I don't know what that, I'm not sure exactly what we told them and how much money we've spent thus far. It'd be nice to know those things. What did we actually ask them to do? What, how, how much money, how much money have we spent thus far? And I think it's reasonable, if we're going to even discuss a potential motion for Wednesday, can someone please pre-draft what that motion says, and can we at least have a estimate on staff hours, how many hours it will take or, or cost for us to consider whether, whether we want to support that initiative at this time? I agree with a previous comment, that, you know, merged services potentially has a lot of, a lot of benefit to the taxpayers. We started off the discussion yesterday, if there's better services and lower cost to the taxpayers, we ought to be taking a look at those things. I agree with another comment. I'm not sure this is where I would start that, but that's, that's, that's a great discussion. I can tell you right now, I'm, I'm not clear on what we're asking staff to do. Even though we spent three hours yesterday talking about this, I'm not so sure, if we said, go for it, what exactly are you going to tell your staff to go do? What are, what are the, what is the exact purpose we're asking them to do? And how long will it take to get some kind of an answer back? And I don't know if this is something that's, you know, that's a, a week or two to get that answer back, or we're talking about 90 days. What are, what are we asking?
Yesterday was 60 day. Nineties, I don't care.
Okay, 60 to 90 days to come back with something.
Well, I think I'm, I'm, like Commissioners, I've got questions on the viability of opera, opera, making this operational, making the entire, and I think those questions could be answered. And so if, if you want staff to go in and look at the viability of operationalizing this, and putting a fiscal note on, if there is a fiscal note, or defining what the superior services for the community, which is a second component of that, that's more than money, if we can provide a, a better service for same money, we ought to think about it at least. And we could put some of those notes together and provide you with data to where you can make a better policy decision on whether this moves forward or not. Without those answers, I don't know that we can move on this thing.
One of the things Misty said yesterday was the, the ideas of success hinge on not doing things in a rushed fashion. And I think, again, we're looking at, we're, we're going to have a challenged budget this year. Your staff's going to get very busy. We're going to have to get very creative on how to make this budget work this year. I'm sure Lindsay's listening right now. I am, I'm concerned that, that, that to be, ought to be our focus, how to, how to deliver the core services and hopefully save taxpayer money. And I don't know, this is where I would start that discussion, but that's just me. I, I, I think it's going to take a lot of time, and I agree with Commissioner Dennis. I don't know if there's a lot of, you know, property tax impact to the taxpayer at the end of the day, what are you going to do with this?
If, if I could add on just a little bit, I, I think that you're right. I mean, this is going to be a very challenging year, just given where we're at. But I also think that we have to start at least making progress on some of these other things that can help with property taxes in the future, and if we don't start somewhere, then we don't start. I mean, I, I think there's just, there's so much opportunity for consolidated services or just going down that path and seeing what could come of it. I, I would hate to say, let's not start because we're too busy, because we're going to be busy. Oh my God, we're going to be busy every year. I mean, this is it. This is a challenging year, and next year's going to be a challenge. Every year we have, if we do nothing different, if we make no changes, we're going to have the same problems, and we're just as challenging. And so I, I do realize that this is a lot of work, and it's going to pull you away from things that you're working on, and so I appreciate our staff and your willingness to be helpful in here, but I do think it's important that we at least start.
Yeah, if I can add, one of the things that was made yesterday, the comment that was made that I felt like was, from a time management standpoint, you said 90% of the work's already done.
In, in this case, everything that we talked about at the end yesterday, those are all heavy lifts, and all of them are going to require discussion, due diligence, analysis, you know, qualitative and quantitative. Is it going to cost more money? Is it going to cost, is it going to save money? Quality, can we bring better quality to citizens? In this case, in this example, a lot of that legwork is done. There's lists of things on that document that you got yesterday that showed good things for the community if we can pull this off. What's, what I'm not clear on is operationally within that org chart, does it cost county any more money? What's the fiscal note on this? What are the fiscal savings on this potential? And I think that's where we need to dig a little bit. But in this, a lot of this
Parks, Rex, that.
All of the employees have been talked to, all the stakeholders have been talked to, and this gives us a template moving forward on any of these other nine things on the list. This is how you do it. It's how you do mergers. You talk to people, it's a lot of communication, it's a heavy lift, and it's, it's just, it's like a template. You follow it every time, because you have to talk to the stakeholders, the workers who have to do it, and you have to talk to our consumers, the citizens about how, what they feel about it, which I mean, we'll do it every time. That's, that's what we do, and if that's the will of the Commission, and that's the will of the on-bunk, this staff will do whatever it takes to, to get you where you want to be.
But I, I don't know that I agree that 90% of the workload is done. Everything that Misty provided us was hearts and flowers out here, and there one of the things that I mentioned yesterday is that there was nothing negative in their entire briefing. You got to look at pros and cons. You can't just look at hearts and flowers and say, this is the greatest thing that ever happened.
I think some of what I am asking is that we actually do that diligence. We have partners at the city that, that want to have a conversation. I want to have the conversation, and we can't have the conversation in a complex form unless we actually have the staff give us the metrics, qualitative, good, bad, and ugly, and quantitative, to see what we have. So what, what I'm asking for is just giving the staff the capacity to do that. And I'm, I'm not hard-pressed on the timetable either. I know there was a comment from Manager Layton that he asked for 60 days, because he's talking about 25 budget. I, that is, for me, that's not even a priority at this point. It's, it's to try to vet out work that was authorized by a previous commission that got a lot of work done. And I think we just need to see it through to its proper conclusion so we can make a determination, yea or nay. Yea, we find savings. Yea, we find efficiencies, or nay, and then we move on, and we look at other opportunities, which doesn't even have to happen in this budget cycle. These are conversations on the Blue Ribbon Committee that we're going to be discussing. We can do this after the budget, or after the manager's approved budget specifically. So, because I am very sensitive to the time, and we've got our we've got our work cut out for us in this budget. So I think what I'm asking to do is finish some of the work that was done, and actually tie some fiscal notes, and I have some ideas and suggestions that we can talk about as well as to what I would look for and plan, one plan versus another plan and so forth. So we can do that, and just if we have agreements, just have them staff it, we can do that. Justin and I had talked about, because of the formality of the on-bunk, trying to do a motion of sorts, but if it wasn't necessary, it wasn't necessary, and it was withdrawn anyway, so I just want to see us through to completion, so we either open the door to further conversations on parks and recs, or we close it for good. But there was money invested with P P M C, and there's a plan that could be upwards of 90% done, so I think we just need to see, we need to see it through.
Commissioners, if I could, we were able to use WSU Mill Levy special project funds for that. It was a total of $25,000 paid in 2022, and the project was totally signed off on.
Okay. So I, I mean, I, I'm okay with having, I, I think it's helpful even to have this discussion in a B O C C meeting, so that everybody can see that we're not just pushing these things through, that we're having significant conversations about the advantages and the disadvantages, and I also think that's helpful, so if there's no objections, I think it would be, we can either do it in a staff meeting, or as Commissioner Mike's point, we can add to the agenda and have this discussion. I think it's helpful either way for the public to hear us vet this out, flesh it out.
Make a quick point. My, my recollection of the meeting, the on-bunk meeting yesterday, was that the motion that you had made was specifically to direct the Chair, Chair Pro-Tim, Managers from both sides, Mayor, Vice Mayor, for the Blue Ribbon Committee you just mentioned. I don't believe the motion had to do with the parks issue. I know there was a lot of discussion about that, but and I don't know the extent Commissioner Mike was talking about, if he was meaning the parks issue or
No, I was, to be clear, I was talking, the motion I made was about asking our staff to work with city staff to finalize the parks.
Okay, I apologize, and I misunderstood.
Yeah, the separate, the Managers and Pro-Tim and I, and the Mayor and Vice Mayor are going to have just separate conversations about a potential Blue Ribbon Committee and work it out, so it was totally narrow scope on parks and recs. Follow up? Okay, so we're on.
Agenda then?
Yep.
Okay, we have nothing else.
Okay, no executive session?
There actually will be an executive. About that later.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Anything? Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you. May 8th, I want to look forward just a little bit. We do have a B O C C meeting that's a we also have the K U Biomed ribbon cutting that day at 11 o'clock, but we got budget hearings that afternoon. And it's going to be a busy day, trying to make sure that we can get all this stuff done. I just want to point it out to
Plan the agenda.
The only thing I know that's going to be on the agenda for that day, most likely, is the water. What time is the
Uh, 11 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that May, it's going to be a busy day. We've got some things for K U that afternoon on top of that.
Oh, I appreciate you bringing that up. Last point is, I asked Lisa and Carol to give us some ideas of the 911 Advisory Board, Laura's Board, to see where the applications are. We have one coming on Wednesday. Commissioner Dennis had one, but I want to make sure we can get her board filled pretty quick, so we can get to work on that. So I'll, if you can, I'll get that information to you, and then we can, if you can update Commissioners. So we might need to, from a media standpoint, comms standpoint, keep pushing and make it a focus for us to, to get it, to get it filled. So anything else? Good, have a good weekend. Good, have a good weekend.